I will order the meeting to Greenwood Common Council on Monday, October the 16th. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing and be led in prayer this evening by Chaplain David Markold.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. God of all, I have complete confidence in that you're going to work through this meeting tonight. And, Lord, I have complete confidence in the folks in this room. That they are good people and we're good people together. There's the opportunity for goodness to occur. And I believe you smile upon gatherings such as this, so smile upon us. Give these counselors wisdom, give our departments just your blessings. God Almighty, thank you for new initiatives at intersection and other things that are happening that are society for all of us. God of all, I confess to you and to this room that I'm much more impatient when it comes to breast cancer and cancer in our midst. And God Almighty probably affects everyone in this room. We've got stories, we've got loved ones. Indeed, I suspect someone in this room right now has that affliction. God Almighty, our Board of Health says 260 people in Johnson County died last year from cancers of all sorts. So send a cure. From our deepest hearts, we ask you to push away this scourge from our lives. We know there's always going to be afflictions and challenges, but God Almighty, we plead to you to bring a cure to cancer and let it happen soon. Tomorrow would be just right. Bless those who are researching, bless those who are in this room that are afflicted and their families afflicted, and let us all be sensitive and care for each other. Lord, remind us all and put within and all of us a fire to get the testings, the screenings, the blood tests, the mammograms, that we can do our part. In God Almighty, we confess that we'd like this to be gone from our lives. So take us now to where you want us to be, the confidence that you love us and you're going to take care of us. Now I'll pray in the name of Jesus, each praying in their own way. Amen.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, roll call. Present. Here. Here. Hopper. Here. Lexi. Here. Middleton. Here. Here. We have a four. I want to be sure to receive copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting of October the 2nd. Do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
And then, Mr. Bates, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here, none, then roll call of the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Finished your approval, vote nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council?
Nothing reported.
Anything of control at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Do you have the Committee of Board reports? We haven't had an RDC meeting since our last meeting. We do have one tomorrow. All right, number of reports. This is an opportunity on our agenda for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to do so, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit per topic.
Hi, my name is Nathan Paul. I'm the president of local forty-two, two Johnson County Professional Fire Fighters. I also have someone else with me that would like to speak. I'm here to speak on the ordinance 23-18. I am in favor, and so is our organization's in favor of this ordinance if this is going to public safety. But with the growth of the city, we have to grow public safety along with it. So this money needs to be earmarked, or at least a big proportion of this money to go to public safety. We're staffing and all.
Thank you.
I will do my best to get this under five minutes. My name is Dan Ridge, I'm the district vice president for Johnson County Firefighters with 4252 Greenwood District. In 2006, Greenwood had 45,000 residents. We built Station 94 in anticipation of growth and staffing matrix was set 17. Fifteen firefighters to minimally staff each apparatus plus one spare plus battalion chief. In 2006, we did 4,500 runs. It's now 2023, we have over 65,000 residents, that's a 45% increase. Our run load is on track to exceed 9,000, that's a 100% increase. And our staffing matrix is still at 17. That's a 0% increase in manpower to do twice the work. In January, we hired six new firefighters to bring us to full staffing. Theoretically, 20 firefighters and a battalion chief. To do the numbers, the actual staffing from January 1st to September 30th is 17.2. That's 17.2 firefighters per day on the truck, average. That's three men on each truck plus two engines. The IFF recommends a staffing of four for engines and five for trucks. NFPA 1410 and 1500 both say it's recommended that a minimum acceptable fire company staffing level consists of four members responding on it or riding with each engine or aerial ladder responding to any type of fire. There's been a lot of studies to back this up. Dallas, Texas did a study that says a rescue's between 12 and 15 minutes has a 46.6 survival rate. When you get over that 15 minutes, it drops to 5%. That 15 minutes is from the time the fire starts, not the time we get there. We can't do anything about how long it takes to call, how long it takes to get there. But as Westerville, Ohio showed, a four-man fire crew can potentially rescue a victim 80% faster than a three-man crew. And Seattle, Washington showed that it takes 11 minutes to accomplish the same objective that a four-man crew can accomplish in eight and a half minutes. Two minutes and 36 seconds difference. It doesn't seem like much unless you've got your head in a 500-degree hump and holding your breath. They went on to say that three-man crews have little margin for error and any appreciable delay might place the control of the fire beyond their capability. We need to keep this in mind in knowing that 46% of our firefighters have less than five years as a full-time firefighter in the fire department. Over a five-year period, Seattle, Washington did a study that shows the rate of firefighter injuries were 54% greater for engine companies than three personnel as compared to four. That implication is that a smaller workforce using the same heavy equipment has to do the same job. Injuries will continue to increase to your back, your knees, your shoulders, at a great cost to the city. I personally, in the last 27 years, have had two shoulder surgeries and a knee surgery that have taken me off the job for over 12 months. And the city had to pay someone to take my place while they were paying me short-term disability. I'm not the only one, there are several of us. Austin, Texas did a study of two storage fires for residential that showed improvement between three- and four-person engines of 73%, 66% for ladder companies, and 35% for high-rise. It also showed a physiological impact of a 53% decrease in air consumption. Austin, Texas also showed over three years that three-man crews suffered 46% higher rate of injuries than four-man crews. The IAFF, in cooperation with John Hopkins, confirmed that cities that operate with less than four personnel had an injury rate 36% greater than those with four or more. The U.S. Fire Academy did an applied research study that showed a 23.8% decrease in the number of reported injuries, 25% decrease in the number of time-loss injuries, and 71% decrease in total time loss overall. Over the past 27 years, I've seen the consequences in terms of property and human loss and suffered the ramifications that have lasted decades of many decisions that were made for fiscal responsibility to make us the lowest tax base of anybody over 10,000, as opposed to keeping our citizens and our employees safe. I ask you not to let this be one of those decisions. I know you're in a difficult position, being asked to vote for a tax increase three weeks before the general election. If you vote no, you're anti-public safety. If you vote yes, you're raising taxes. If the council can include an amendment or some type of verbiage that will hold the administration accountable to make sure that the money goes towards public safety and staffing, you're doing yourselves and the city a great favor. You're keeping your families, your neighbors, and your constituents safe. I saw that, you heard last week when President, or Chief Bison had to give back a lot of PTO because of their critical shortages. And I know that Chief Washell's number-one priority is four-man staffing. I ask you to continue to make Greenwood a city of pride and progress. If we don't pass this, we will dig ourselves deeper into a hole that we will never get out of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for, or, sorry, anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Dan Maru, 153 Pilgrim Drive from Greenwood. And I would like to speak against this fine 23-18. To me, it is an opportunity for the city to begin to take a bigger chunk than somebody else's pie, as we've done with our tips, so that the others, units, don't get any money, as we do with our bond issue. We've got to eat another bond, otherwise somebody else might take the money. And other people need the money in the county. We need people, we have those worthless warehouses. So we have lots of people who need lick money, we have people who need food stamps, we have people who need English as a second language, we need mental health, we need things that are outside of Greenwood that do need adjusting. Mr. Wright did an excellent speech last time concerning how our tax rates are so wonderfully low. But, you know, we give away millions of dollars, we gave away millions of dollars to our handy-dandy local luxury apartment complex builder. And he said, "Thank you for the money, the buy suckers hasn't picked up and moved to Carmel, where they have a higher rate, they don't give away money for apartment complexes or warehouses." The higher and more desirable places do things differently. And I think that one thing we can do is to stop trying to see how many bonds we can use and other activities to take money from people. Make breaks in taxes, give us some services, raise fire department money, and take this other route rather than how can I screw up the other departments out of their money? How can I make myself more like Carmel instead of saying, "Oh, they've got a higher rate, Freitters has a higher rate"? I think that we need to look at city desirability and livability, perhaps raise tax rates, charge warehouses more, and move forward for the city rather than continue to move backwards. I thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, moving on, ordinances and resolutions, there's none under notice of intent to consider. And first reading, ordinance number 2339.
An ordinance authorizing purchasing agents of the city to make advanced payments on contracts for public works, projects, goods, and services sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council? Here, none, then roll call, ordinance 2339, first reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Excuse me, was Betron the two vote?
I thought I.
All right, okay, I'm sorry. Ordinance 2339 passes first reading eight to one. Ordinance 2340.
An ordinance of the city of Greenwood authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital expenditures, road projects, and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and all the others related thereto.
Do you have a motion?
Sir.
Motion, Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council? Here, none, then roll call, first reading ordinance 2340.
Betron.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2340 passes first reading nine to zero. Resolution 2319.
Okay, resolution establishing holidays for employees of the city for the year 2024 sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Lexi, second. Second, Ms. Betron, any discussion? Here, none, then roll call, ordinance, resolution 2319, first reading.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Ordinance, resolution 2319 passes first reading nine to zero. Second reading, ordinance 2332.
An ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the coming 2024 budget is sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion?
Sir.
Motion, Ms. Gibson, second. Second, Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on the council? Here, none, then roll call, second reading, ordinance 2332.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Aye. Before we move on, there's a form, number four, that we all need to sign and indicate your vote. I will start this this direction, and when we're done, pass it back this way. And then, Mr. Middleton, you can pass it back to me.
Your votes are what?
So?
Your vote for what?
Well, you just voted.
The budget.
The budget.
Oh.
All right, ordinance number 2333.
An ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Greenwood and city utilities for the year 2024 sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Sir.
Motion, Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hopper, any discussion? Here, none, then roll call, ordinance 2333, second reading.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Bet.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance 2333 passes second reading nine to zero. Ordinance number 2334.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the clerk of the city for the year 2024 sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Sir.
Motion, Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bates, any discussion?
Mr. President, I have something I'd like to talk about. It's really about this ordinance, also the common ordinance 2335. It's kind of my attention that for several years now, the city of Greenwood has not been properly allocating the functions of the clerk of the court between the court staff and clerk staff. According to IC 33-35-3-1-A, the only time that the judge may act is the clerk of the city court or appointed clerk as in a third-class city. As we all know, Greenwood's a second-class city. And as such, the clerk ought to be acting as the clerk of the court and performing more functions of duties than she has in Greenwood. Accordingly, the budget is allocated too highly to the court and not highly enough to the clerk. So tonight, I'll be changing my vote on this to a better.
All right.
And I would like also to request that in order to avoid litigation on this matter, the city attorneys provide an opinion on promptly. So that before a few months from now, we have a resolution of this internally, at no cost to the taxpayers.
All right.
Can we make a motion to suspend the election?
This is a salary ordinance, really has little to do with budget. All right, any other discussion on ordinance 2334?
Mr. President, I have an amendment I would like to propose to this, separate from Mr. Lexi, and something I will be repeating in all of these. I'd like to reflect a 0% pay increase for the judge to reflect the pay of 2023. Clerk, clerk, sorry.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Middleton to amend the ordinance 2334 to eliminate the pay increase and keep the salary as it currently is. Second, 2023. We have a second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance 2334?
I would just like to have some clarification or justification, rationale for that.
Just given the conversations we've had of staffing shortages, needing money for public safety and things like that, I just don't think it's appropriate for layman officials to see the pay increase in the same.
Well, that was also, in our last meeting, the discussion was made that if we were to vote down the ordinance, the paper referred to see if we're not seeing that need to happen, just that the increase for the officials.
All right, any further discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2334? Here, none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2334.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Aye.
Ordinance 23, or the amendment to ordinance 2334 fails in a vote of four to five. Any further discussion on ordinance 2334? Here, none, then roll call, ordinance 2334, second reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance 2334 passes second reading in a vote of seven to two. Ordinance 2335.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the judge of the city of Greenwood for the year 2024 sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion, Ms. Gibson, second. Second, Mr. Hopper. Same thing, we have a motion by Mr. Middleton to amend ordinance 2335 to eliminate the salary increase and keep the salary as it is in 2023. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2335?
Mr. Middleton, have you done the math? What does that equal up to, clerk, the judge, mayor, I assume, council?
I've done the math, but I did not analyze it.
I would assume it adds up to essentially nothing, basically, not enough to hire a police officer, not enough to hire a firefighter, not enough to equip a police officer or equip a firefighter. If you take just the judge's salary, it's, no, I had 120,000, it's talking about $3,600, I think. The raises were one through, I'm sure. What was the six?
Five.
Five, four. All right, so $6,000 something. That'd be the $12,000, count him and there. Clerk makes nowhere near what they do, so maybe $4,000. Getting that, it's really not enough money to do anything with staff. Just wanted to point that out.
Right, any further discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2335? Here, none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2335.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Campbell.
Nay.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Nay.
Lexi.
Aye.
Ordinance 2335 is amended on a vote of six to three. Any discussion on ordinance 2335 as amended? Here, none, then roll call, second reading, ordinance 2335 as amended.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Ordinance 2335 as amended passes nine to zero. Ordinance 2336.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the common council of the city of Greenwood Indiana for the year 2024 sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Sir.
Motion, Ms. Gibson, second. Mr. Lexi. We have a motion by Mr. Middleton to amend the ordinance 2336 to keep the council's salary the same as it is in 23, 2023. Any discussion on the, I do have a motion of the second, who said, we have a motion of the second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2336? Here, none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2336.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Nay.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2336 is amended on a vote of seven to two. Any discussion on ordinance 2336 as amended? Here, none, then roll call, ordinance 2336 is amended, second reading.
Betron.
Betron. Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2336 as amended passes second reading nine to zero. Ordinance 2337.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor of the city agreement Indiana for the year 2024 sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Sir.
Motion, Ms. Gibson, second. Second by Ms. Betron. Same topic, we have a motion to amend ordinance 2337 by Mr. Middleton to keep the mayor's salary at the 2023 level. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams, any discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2337? Here, none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2337.
Campbell.
Nay.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Nay.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Ordinance 2337 is amended on a vote of six to three. Any discussion on ordinance 2337 as amended? Here, none, then roll call, ordinance 2337 as the second reading.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Ordinance 2337 passes second reading in a vote of eight to one. Resolution 2318.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council petition for appeal of relief from property tax levy limitations sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion?
Sir.
Motion, Ms. Gibson, second. Second for Mr. Hopper. Chief.
Good evening, council. Jamie Washell, Fire Chief. I am in support of resolution 23-18. The additional revenue would be used to enhance fire department operational administrative functions at Greenwood Fire Department. It's necessary for updated equipment, for new and continued training opportunities for the fire department personnel while maintaining a healthy operating budget and preparing us all for future, future expansion and growth of this department. The recent building growth, the population growth in Greenwood correlates with run-call volume increases the fire department has experienced over recent years. Couple examples of this would be in 2018, the fire department experienced a run-call volume of approximately 6,800 calls. This year, we are on pace for over 9,000 calls. That's approximately a 31% increase in call lines from five years ago. This most example is that there are currently astounding 5,936 structures and/or apartment units under construction that will soon be completed or have been already this year. Current growth in digital structures, as well as population increases, is rapid in Greenwood and is necessary to keep up with this unprecedented growth. and is necessary to keep up with this unprecedented growth that we are currently experiencing. The new addition of Station ninety-five with additional personnel will aid in addressing this growth. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Wright?
Presentation here, Jeff, the new assistant. Send the presentation for the best. I have the folder that says presentations. Good evening, everybody. Greg Wright, Controller of the City. Okay. I'm gonna share it. Good evening, everybody. Greg Wright, City Controller. Prepared a short presentation regarding the levy appeal funds. Based on some conversations I've had with council members over the past week or so and some of the concerns of the race, we wanted to address those, private your final vote here. So a discussion of where the funds are going. The twenty twenty-four budget was built assuming the levy appeal would be integrated. That additional property tax levy is showing on the general funds budgets. However, the fire fund is also benefiting from it because we are shifting additional income taxes. So in twenty twenty-three, five and a half million dollars of income taxes were dedicated to the fire fund. We're raising that in the twenty twenty-four budget to six point eight million. Also, in twenty twenty-four, and then again in twenty twenty-five, as we discussed during the budget process, we're planning to add four full-time firefighter positions, two a fund each year without filling those positions. This is anticipation of Station ninety-five's opening allows us to phase in those expenses over time. And the actual unspent dollars that are dedicated there remain in the fire fund. They do not go back into the general to build up the cash reserve that supports the department in the future. Why is that important to us? Because right now, the plan is that Station ninety-five will be able to open in twenty twenty-six. So by twenty twenty-six, we will need to identify funding to take care of twelve new full-time firefighters. Turn out gear, new air physicals in that first year, and then the supplies and services and charges that go along with getting a new house. So that's everything, the operating supplies, cleaning supplies, U S supplies, the utilities, the property liability insurance. The way I estimated these was to take the twenty twenty-four budget, divide it over the four houses for those items that are house specific, and then project that out with a three percent inflationary growth, which is extremely conservative of the current players. Uh, the, the salaries and benefits, the, are the largest piece of that pie, one point four nine one. And then assuming only three percent growth in the future, obviously, if pay raises are higher than that, that number will need to be higher. The net net of this, this slide though, is that by twenty twenty-six, we will need to identify one point six seven six million dollars in additional operating funds to make Station ninety-five a reality. At this point in time, we don't have another way to generate that level of funding for operations. The way the property tax system works in the state of Indiana, we can't just raise property taxes to accommodate what we need. We have to meet certain specific criteria. That criteria is addressed in this excess levy appeal. The other thing would be, well, what can you cut in other areas? We're, as has been mentioned a couple times this evening, we're already the lowest tax rate. We're already running every other area on choice funding. Uh, we can't cut our way to an additional one point six nine dollars. The capital cost that'll go along with constructing this, we're playing from mostly a bond issue on that new tip district, the worst filled road tip district. We could use some funds from a geo bond if necessary. The thing about those funds is they don't take into account that we need to staff that station. So we could build a station with no problem by twenty twenty-six. The fact of the matter is, without this levy appeal, we don't have a source for the funding to put any people in. So what I would address on the question of earmarking. Number one, we reached out to TAP law regarding earmarking of funds. And there is actual case law speaking to this, and the direct quote was that councils should not take action that restricts the discretionary powers of future councils. Because the creation and passing, amending, and reducing the budgets is under the full discretion of the council, requiring the excess levy funds to be tied to public safety would violate this restriction. So legally, we don't have a way to tie the hands of future councils. But what I will tell you from this presentation is that every dollar of this levy, and then some, will be needed to fund Station ninety-five. The commitment to Station ninety-five is the commitment of those funds. Additionally, we talked about the potential impact on the income tax split with the rest of the county. If nobody else changed their piece and our piece changed, I would estimate up to three hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars in income taxes would, would be our change of that piece of the pie. However, every other unit is going through a different process at this point in time. They may issue bonds, they may do other things. We can't predict what anyone else is doing with their budget at this time. So I can't say for certain that that will come. So the impact of this levy request, as I see it, property tax levy ask is about one point four million dollars. Our tax cap loss is currently standard about fifteen percent, that's two hundred and ten thousand dollars off the top of that. If best case scenario, we get another three hundred and fifty K in income taxes, that takes us to one point four, or one point five four million. Uh, it doesn't get us to where we need to be, but with the growth factor on top of the next two years, it will get us to our close. Another question that came up during discussions was related to taxpayers impacted. Greenwood has a lot of different tax districts. We have eight tax districts. Uh, they range from in taxing District forty-three, one dollar eighty-one point six one cents, so one point eight one, eight, one, six, one per hundred dollars of assessed value, to as high as District twenty-five, where it's two point six one oh five. It's a pretty big spread in tax rates. That tax rate is what impacts your tax caps. So you will see there that in some of the higher tax rate districts, it doesn't take much assessed value at all to hit the tax caps. And frankly, if you're already at the tax caps, there's no impact at all to you in this levy appeal. Then ran an average tax bill based on twenty twenty-three using the PLGS calculator for our lowest tax rate district, our highest tax rate district in the one of the middle ones. So in District twenty-five, our highest tax rate district, we added two hundred thousand dollar homes. Keep it in mind that it takes about a hundred and fifteen thousand to hit the tax cap, so this one's already at the cap. Currently, what part of your bill goes to the city of Greenwood is five hundred and four dollars. If your assessment stays the same in twenty twenty-four, what will go to your, from your bill to the city of Greenwood is five hundred and four dollars. The only change that will be caused is in your assessment. So in this case, based on the, the tax caps, if your two hundred thousand dollar home increased by a thousand dollars, so if it went up to two hundred and one thousand dollars, your tax bill piece that goes to Greenwood would become five hundred and seven dollars. So three dollars per thousand of assessed value increase in that district to build Station ninety-five and staff it. In District forty-three, this is our lowest tax rate district, it's under two dollars. It takes about two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of assessed value to hit the tax cap in this district. So that same two hundred thousand dollar home of this district, in their twenty twenty-three tax bill, the piece that went to the city of Greenwood is six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Why? Because they don't get any tax caps. After this appeal, if their assessment doesn't change, they would still only pay six hundred and sixty-three dollars to the city of Greenwood. But the per thousand dollar assessed value change difference on this one is five dollars per thousand. So the increase, if your assessed value goes up, their tax bill, the actual bill piece that goes to the city of Greenwood, would be an extra five dollars per thousand. And that's split over two taxpayers. Finally, I picked tax District forty because it's kind of, it just barely hits the tax cap. So you'll see there, uh, on this one, their tax credit was only seventy-five dollars. It's the same two hundred thousand dollar home of their bill, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which the city of Greenwood. With this appeal and no assessment change, still six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Without it, you're looking at, again, a, an approximate five dollars per thousand increase of assessed value impact. As far as what happens next, the, the levy appeal still has to be submitted to the D L G F if it's approved. So there is still another hurdle to approval. Uh, it's not a guarantee that we'll get it. If it is approved by the D L G F, then we would proceed with the budget as it's been presented, because as I said, it does include those funds. Were D L G F to deny it, or were council to deny it, we would have to adjust the revenue projections from the budget. And then we decide whether or not we needed to adjust the expenses or plan for a single year spend down of cash to offset those revenue differences. The biggest thing would be our long-term plan. Right now, our long-term plan is to have Station ninety-five operational by twenty twenty-six. In order to do that, demonstrated, there has to be more operating funds. To make that timeline, without some other miraculous income stream, you know, if, if, if the state legislature were to make a change, maybe, you know, it would give us something, but because next year is a budget year, we can't get anything like that passed or next year. So the earliest we could hope for any kind of relief is twenty twenty-six. So again, we would not make the timeline. We're out hoping to make for Station ninety-five without it.
Any questions for Mr. Wright?
I have a quick question regarding the information from TAP law. Sadly, this was sent to us at six o'clock this evening, so not much time. I'm sorry, yeah, about six o'clock this evening. So not much time to do follow-up questions here. I'm talking about the case law, not state law, correct?
Correct. So there are big cases tried on this, and the, the courts have found against those councils that have attempted to bind the hands of a future council.
Okay. And the case that was mentioned in the email from TAP law here, what was the nature of that? Because I'm obviously saying about paragraph of what I was saying.
County Council versus Stellmar. I don't know the nature of the case, but it talks about county commissioners of the council trying to eliminate, limit the discretionary functions of its successors. So maybe frankly, said board commissioners cannot preclude itself or its successors from the right to exercise the powers given by statute. So from the, the perspective of TAP, the way that the case law has, has shaken out is that the courts have said that you cannot tell a future council how they can budget. Because they have a duty by statute to set the budget in that. So you, basically, the twenty twenty-three council can't tell the twenty twenty-five or the twenty thirty-five, the twenty forty-five council, here's how you must spend this money. Because all of those councils are expected to look at the situations that have in front of them for that particular budget year and make that decision. Uh, it is considered a discretionary decision of that council.
I guess my question would be really, we're not saying ask to do this one specific item, right? Like a line item that's being directed towards, being directed towards more an area of the budget. So the discretionary power would still be there, right, to establish, say, you could spend that one point three million on public safety, but it might be for a fire engine, it might be for staffing, it might be.
And what happens is the state were to pass something out of their taxation committee that changes how public safety is funded. But then we're still dedicated to giving property taxes to something that hasn't different funding sources. We don't know what's going to happen with the funding. So I can't say for certain that we're going to have that property tax every year in the future as well. So that's part of the, the discussion there, uh, is that by trying to limit those future councils, what you're saying is that you must do it this way, and that might not be the situation. There might be other considerations that have to go into that. What I'm showing in here is that every single dollar of this is going to end up at Station ninety-five. It doesn't, it doesn't happen by twenty twenty-six without it. So that is the commitment, is that Station ninety-five gets building, gets open. Every single dollar of that is in public safety. In fact, it's at the fire department.
Doesn't that case law really demonstrate that if we pass this tonight, it not only affects one year, but affects every year thereafter?
Yes, yes. So, so I mean, the current budget has quite a bit of it already dedicated. But if you're looking to affect future years, that's where you run into problems. Right. So this isn't a tax increase for one year, one tally. This is a tax increase that's going to, this is the maximum levy permanently increased for, yes. I'll think that's clear.
And if there was a state legislature change to this, a future council could amend the language, correct?
Correct. The, the thing is, that language would be completely unenforcement, because the first council that called that it could just amend it and it would be gone. So there's, there's absolutely zero value to an unenforcement.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Right, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the council?
Um, I have another question, so yeah, moving forward. I understand the statement that there's no value to an unenforcement of ordinance. I see great value in putting the language into this ordinance to say that this money will go towards public safety. Last meeting, I, I was on the fence about what to vote for this, and I do support public safety. I do want to see that big station. I'm excited. It's in my district. My constituents want a closer fire station. So, um, I'd like to propose an amendment to the ordinance to clearly state that this tax levy is for the increase in our funding toward public safety, removing the verbiage for parks, recreation, and other amenities.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Williams to amend or a resolution twenty-three eighteen to specifically state that the, uh, all the money raised on this additional tax levy will go toward public safety. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion on the motion to amend resolution twenty-three eighteen?
I guess for the same reason that I spoke earlier tonight about the fact that we need to examine the allocation of duties and responsibilities between the clerk's office and the court. And that, that comes from my belief that we all took it out to support state law. I guess I can't support an amendment to the ordinance if it's contrary to case law.
Anyone else wants to speak to the amendment to resolution twenty-three eighteen? Here in end and roll call on the amendment to resolution twenty-three eighteen.
Lexi.
Nay.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Nay.
Gibson.
Nay.
Gil.
Aye.
Hopper.
Nay.
Amendment to the resolution twenty-three eighteen passes on a vote of five to four. Any discussion on the resolution twenty-three eighteen as amended?
Mr. President, I do have one thing I'd like to say here. Something in the right, I appreciate the amendment that's been offered. That gives me some uh, relief, uh, if that's the case, we're accused. Here's, I'd like to say on this, I have wrestled with this resolution the past two weeks. I pushed it intently to the rationale concerning its merits, believing that its passage would benefit the fire and police departments. the fire and police departments, I voted favorably for its passage. Ever also believe that the food and beverage tax would go to public safety. Talked to several citizens, including constituents. I myself doubting whether the resolution would have the same results. Yes, it would be added to the general fund and maybe this amendment will help that situation. I have an administration who have the final say over distribution. Again, there is no guarantee that it will. Additionally, its passage may not affect all taxpayers. It certainly will affect some. Therefore, I do not want to leave this council knowing that by record included the tax increase. Said, I would cast a negative vote.
Mr. Wright, come back up here, please. Could you explain the 1% food and beverage tax and what happened with that and why you can't use it for public safety and how we've done to use that money for public safety?
Sure. So we obviously tried for many years to get the state legislature to give us the option to adopt the local food and beverage tax at 1%. When that finally looked to be getting out of committee, it was amended and specifically the parts regarding use for public safety were removed. We were told by the lawmaker who was carrying it that if we've not passed committee, if they didn't make that change, but that they had added parks in so that we could take that money from the parks property tax levy and push it back into the public safety functions. So that is what we did. So all of the parks, 200, 300, and most of their 400 little expenditures were moved into the food and beverage tax file, which took up the vast majority of those dollars. In this year's budget, we also used some of it to pay for some vehicle leases, which was also viable use. What that did though is free up funds that would have otherwise needed to come from property taxes into the parks budget. They were then taken and pushed into the general fund and we pushed more local income tax into the fire, which is why that local income tax number for this year is up to 5.5 million. That number has grown quite significantly over the last several years as we try to shift more of the fire fund onto local income taxes because it is a monthly income source rather than every six months income source. It keeps the flush as well as keeping that tax rate in the lower AB area that because they don't, there is an area of the city that doesn't pay the Greenwood fire fund tax. We don't want to push more of our tax rate onto that fund because it necessarily takes a higher rate to raise the same amount of dollars as it would in the general.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, one question. That's a lot of words, but just simply, did the food and beverage tax free up money that went to the fire and police department?
Yes.
In a statement to the contrary, that would be false.
It would be incorrect.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on Resolution 2318 as amended?
This, as Mr. Wright will say, this is a tax increase for every year going forward. I don't support.
Any further discussion? Renowned and roll call, Resolution 2318 as amended, second reading.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Ben Chong.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Nay.
Resolution 2318 passes as amended, passes second reading with a vote of seven to two. Ordinance 2338.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-69, paid time off policy to allow Greenwood Police Patrol Division officers $8 million to do a PTO lead in 2023 sponsored by Hopper.
And a motion. Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Public safety.
Any discussion?
Nothing.
If you're online, please silence your microphone, please. Right. Any discussion on the council on ordinance 2338? Renowned and roll call, ordinance 2338.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ben Chong.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Ordinance 2338 passes second reading nine to zero. New business.
Mr. Chris, before you go on, I would like to ask Mr. Wright a question regarding the tax levy. According to the information that you just presented to us tonight, if either the DLGF or the council did not approve that, or did not approve us for that, so what we have just done, earmarking that to public safety, could that cause this not to be approved?
It depends on who's reviewing it, a DLGF potentially.
So we're.
That will be part of the consideration.
So we're at risk.
Well, we also could have been at risk, but the why being that not specific reasons.
All right. We've already passed that resolution.
Okay. I just wanted a question.
Let's move on. New business introduction, a new ordinance as a resolution. Ordinance number 2341.
An ordinance providing for an additional appropriation from the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to budget classification 445 in the amount of $36,814 for air purification systems for the city employee health clinics sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Wright.
So this additional appropriation would come from the ARPA dollars. We installed on the second and fourth floors of this building these devices, it's germ and virus elimination device, GABED. It's produced by a local company called Turntech. We've had some pretty, pretty good success with them on, on the second and fourth floors. I know my staff seems to think that the, the air is cleaner, less people getting sick, so hopefully that's the case. But the thought was that most of the sick people in this building will be in the clinic if we did not install any there. So we would be looking for funding to install them there.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right. Moving on, ordinance number 2342.
An ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the city of Greenwood General Obligation Bonds of 2023 sponsored by Gibson.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
So this is related to the bond ordinance that was voted on earlier through first reading. We have determined that we would like to try and use the Indiana Bond Bank this year rather than going through private placement as we have it passed, mostly because of the current interest requirement. Bond Bank is actually doing a lot of these around the state and they are subsidizing the interest rates, keeping it lower for local units. So we believe that we would qualify under their program and get a better rate, but they do require a separate ordinance to appropriate those proceeds. Generally, in the past with our regular ones, we've just had it as part of the regular bond ordinance, but they have specific forms that they want theirs in. So that's why we are looking at asking for suspension through first reading, get it on track with the other ordinance so that they would pass at the same time, should they pass at second reading.
All right. Is there a motion to suspend the rules through first reading in ordinance 2342? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second, I'm sorry, motion by Mr. Lexi, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension? Renowned and roll calls on suspension of the rules, ordinance 2342 through first reading.
Aye.
Ben Chong.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye. Aye.
Ordinance, rules are suspended through first reading in ordinance 2342 on vote of nine to zero. We have a motion on first reading. Motion of Ms. Ben Chong, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Renowned and roll call, first reading, ordinance number 2342.
Ben Chong.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2342 passes first reading with a vote of nine to zero. Resolution 2320.
Resolution amending Resolution 2107, the resolution declaring certain area within the city agreement an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax evasion and setting the time and place for public hearing. Sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Wright?
Great, great city controller. So this is actually related to a tax evasion that was passed in 2021. The company is not asking to reduce their investment, but they are asking to reduce the footprint of the buildings. Specifically, it's the current environment for construction materials. The difference between 2021 and now has changed what they get billed for their money. So they would like the approval so that they can reduce the footprint, still invest the same amount of money in the project.
There is a request for suspension through second reading, so we have a motion for suspension through first reading. So, motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on suspension? Renowned and roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading of Resolution 2320.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper. Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ben Chong.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading, vote of nine to zero. We have a motion on first reading Resolution 2320. So, motion from Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pendleton. Any discussions?
I'd just like to put on public record, I will be voting no to this resolution only because I voted no to it in 21, and I still stand by that.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes. So they were going to build 182,000 square foot building, now they want to build roughly 18,000 square foot building.
Don't have the exact figures.
Well, that's what their letter says at the time. So they say the added increase for pavement utilities and other infrastructure, but isn't the assessed value going to be on what the building is more than it is the pavement and other increased infrastructure? So $100,000 or $100,000 square foot decrease in building size would be quite a big reduction on what the assessed value of that particular building is going to be correct.
Yeah, if the money is going into infrastructure.
Because most of the time we vote on these tax makings, it's based on what assessed value of the building is going to be, because that's what we're.
And I guess they're promoting the adjustment overall, but.
While we indulge with the. Probably going to vote that too. Took four years.
All right. Any further discussion? Resolution 2320. Renowned and roll call, first reading Resolution 2320.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Nay.
Hopper.
Nay.
Lexi.
Nay.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
Bates.
Nay.
Ben Chong.
Nay.
Campbell.
Nay. And with that vote, there's no further need for suspension of the rules through second. All right. Well, miscellaneous business, this is a second opportunity for members of the audience to address the council, this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. Again, there's a five-minute time limit for persons, so if you'd like to do so, accept the podium, state your name and address for the record.
State and Paul of Preston, 4252, Johnson County. I just want to honor Sam Cosmo this evening for going through our fire ops back in 2022 with, and all the supply issues, he finally got rejected. So we'd like to honor you with your fire office of participation.
Nice. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wishing to address the council this time? Thank you very much. Renowned and any miscellaneous business from the council? Anything with the corporation council?
Nothing.
Controller?
Nothing.
Mayor's office?
Nothing to the mayor's.
We are adjourned. Thank you.